You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Town and McCandless Planning Commission. Happy New Year, everyone. We'll get off to a fresh and new start here. And just a note of welcome, we have a new member, and I just wanted to welcome Mark Jones as our newest member to the commission, and I'm sure he'll be a great advantage, a great addition to our, our group.
Thank you.
The first order of business is administrative, and we go through this every year. That is the positions of Chair and Vice Chair. So what we need to do is have a nomination for the Chair and a nomination for the Vice Chair. You're welcome to nominate yourself. Raise your name if you want to be considered for either position. Are there any nominations that people want to make? Shelley?
I'd like to nominate Ann Clark. I think with her background in writing zoning law and her many, many years, as well as her involvement in doing the new saldo and zoning updates that she could bring, you know, some new and interesting ideas to this commission.
In which position?
Chair.
Okay.
And we have the town attorney coming on, which is perfect, because I can ask him if we want to take, we want to vote on each nomination as it comes up, which I think is typically what's done.
Okay.
Right, let's give him a second.
And I am welcome to continue. So I guess that means I'm nominating myself.
I'll nominate you also.
All right, let's find out if Steve wants us to vote. One, one by one, or if we do like a say your name or whatnot. Steve, can you hear us? Okay, there you are. Perfect, all right, so I have a really fun procedural question for you. Ready? When we have nomination of officers, should we vote on, like, we have potentially two nominations, should we vote on one at a time chronological, or should people like say a name, you know, from both of them at one time? What do you think?
Yeah, if there are multiple candidates for the same office, multiple nominations, I think the most efficient way is to simply do a roll call and have the members of the commission vote by the last name of the individuals that were nominated. If somebody is able to acquire a majority of votes, then, then you're done.
Okay, all right, so we have Dan and Dan nominated for Chair. Are there any other nominations before we take a vote? Thinking no. Okay. Um. All right, well, then I guess we're not going to read motion to elect blank, so we have a few. Um. Okay, I usually do roll call votes alphabetical and then Chair or, you know, whatever. The end of the end of my voting list, so I'm gonna go in that order for this, Ann.
I'll abstain since I was nominated.
Okay. Um, how do I want to do this? Al.
No, I think either one of you would be great, but I'll, I'll stick with Dan's.
Okay, Mark?
Since you know no one, but that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of looking at the, at your attorney, can I, if it's your mind, I, I just, I would prefer to vote present. I just, I really have nothing for ration at all.
That's basically like what.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I look forward, you know, during the year and, and learning more of it. I'll abstain.
Sean.
I, I agree with Al, both wonderful candidates. I, I'll vote for Dan to continue on though.
Okay, Brendan.
Dan.
I'll abstain as well, since my name is not in nomination.
I think that means we've got, we've got three, we've got out of four possible votes, we have three for you. So Steve, that's simple majority is ignoring abstention. Do we, what do we do here? You're muted, by the way.
No, no, I, you know. So there were three votes for, for Dan.
Yeah, Shelley has not voted yet, and then we have three abstentions.
Yeah, so I, Shelley should vote. That, that would make my answer easier if.
Shelley. Think my obvious vote is Dan.
Okay. So we've got three for Dan, one for Ann, three for nobody.
So Dan wins.
Okay, there we go.
So. Okay, could we nominate for now for the?
Well, give me one second, let me make sure I've got this all recorded correctly. So Steve, I just had my template motions set up to say motion to elect blank, but since we just did this roll call, roll call vote, we don't need to do like a separate one-two motion, yea, nay, right? Cool, all right, well, in that case, now we can do nomination.
I'll nominate Ann for Vice Chairman.
Okay.
Do you need a second for that?
Uh, no, we just take any of the nominations if there are any.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Okay.
Let's take a vote, see how this turns out.
So in this case, Steve, since there are no we do the simple motion, so okay, this would be somebody making a motion to elect Ann as the Vice Chair.
I, I moved to elect Dan as Vice Chair.
Ah, and a second, please.
I'll second.
Al? Okay, so we can just do a yea, nay, I guess, is there? Okay, all right, yes?
Hi.
Okay, so you abstained. All right, and any opposed?
No opposed. We have a new Vice Chair, welcome in.
Thank you.
To the Vice Chair, not to the Commissioner.
No, no, just, just a note, and you abstained from the first row, but you are token this second, but I just, I just.
You've stayed for both, right? Okay.
All right, and I appreciate your support.
Anytime.
All right, asking is done.
All right, administrative issues are finished. Let's move on to item number two, which is the Schultz Ford Lincoln EV dealership issue. We've had some of this before and continued discussion is now.
Good evening, good evening, Mark, my name is Steve Victor, I think the rest of them have seen me multiple times before. Schultz Ford is before you for a preliminary land development application. As far as a preliminary land application, I think we have looked at that and have it should have been approved long time ago, but unfortunately, with the preliminary land development application comes the requirement of submitting stormwater. And stormwater is not a simple preliminary final, it is only final. And so we'd have been caught in just the minutia of the stormwater. I am hoping that Kelly is going to be able to say she is satisfied with the stormwater, if not, then I guess we will continue to work through the minutia. What is the answer?
Sure, so the answer is we've made progress in our phone call, and I have seen progress in the right direction, but we haven't fully received a submission that we can review and give a thumbs up on.
And is the shortage of information dealing with the additional survey information you're requesting? Or is it simply just the stormwater liner and that infiltration?
So the, the main item we would want to see is definitely the storm liner with the infiltration assessed as part of the site, not just kind of the link, which was helpful from the Adam had provided me.
Yes.
Uh, to know that that impermeable liner with those perforations will help to control the, the rate that water will leave the pond. But we want to see that in integrated into the design and just the backup calculations behind it showing that. Um, the survey information, I think, as a whole, would be good to have at this point, too, to make sure that we don't have any issues downstream that we would need to look at from a bigger picture.
That no, not be made part of the final plan. Because that's an, that has nothing to do with our release rates or anything else, and that if there are deficiencies, they could be addressed at the time of final plan.
So I would say the liner that will have to be in, I'm open to assessing the, the downstream stormwater at a later date, I just think I could see it getting held up later if we don't have that addressed, just since stormwater is one of the main priorities in the town. Just a big focus considering it's going, you know, through a neighborhood. So I know there are solutions that we can take if we have issues. I think it's, you know, good to get that upfront homework done, too, in my opinion. But I would be open to that and allowing that at a later stage.
Kelly, would you mind, since I, we've all been talking as staff about, you know, surveying things downstream and the liner and whatnot, but I think for either folks who may be following along.
Yeah.
You know, watching the meetings, or maybe some of the planning commission members who, like, we've got somebody new, and maybe, like, I know there are some here who have more technical knowledge on stormwater than I do, so could you just explain in a little bit more layman's terms, like what the elements of this discussion are at the point?
Sure, so there's two main things that we've been going back and forth on. And one of the reasons we didn't issue a revised comment letter is from the responses that we received, it didn't address our main concerns that we had, and quite a few of the comments kind of overlap the same issues at hand. So the first item that we found is that where the facility, so the stormwater management pond, which is the green, the kind of the blue-green on the right side of the plan here, that facility was showing an infiltration rate of about one hundred and twenty inches per hour, which is extremely high. So we had some conversations about, you know, if there's bedrock in the area, for example, that could be something that would just show water shooting into the bedrock finding is like a point that it's just getting sucked out, so it's not meeting the time that water should really be infiltrated in a controlled manner, which could have some impacts to the downstream residents. For example, any sort of subsurface flooding that we could see due to any of the orifices that would, could be present in the ground. So that was the, the first issue that we've been talking through and.
Stay with that, just so we can, they can understand the word liner and what we were doing.
Yep.
So the solution is if it's raining too quickly, it means the hole's too big. And that hole is the, is probably the bedrock. So how do you do that? Well, you insert a liner underneath it, if you would, a plastic liner underneath it, and you poke a few holes in it so that you control the release rate through the holes in it. So that's the way that you can slow it down, so instead of a hundred and twenty inches an hour, you're going to get it down to three or four inches.
Yeah.
Was the ideal, I think, the target where we wanted to be. And so we have the, we have the mechanical means by which to do it now, that's all been approved. So now we just got to finalize it in a report, so if that needs to be done. That we can do real quickly. And so we're happy to come back next month, and by then, I'm sure we'll have a good review on that portion.
Yeah, so as Steve mentioned, that liner will be, it's kind of like if you even think of like a pool liner, keeps the water in there, but you poke some holes. So we would just need to see the backup from the engineer that technically describes how we're going to get to that three inch per hour, looking at the number of holes, the size of the holes in there. And that would address the common, the concerns that we have regarding the high infiltration rate and any sort of subsurface flooding that could create issues for the downstream residents.
And so for this survey?
Sure.
What, what?
Can I just say on that for a second?
Oh, sure.
So the liner is going to have both poked in it, and is there a maintenance plan or something so those those don't fill with silt and?
So there, there is going to be a maintenance plan that should go with the stormwater management plan as a whole, and that's something that RJ will get recorded, it gets signed and recorded, so that should be a part of the plan.
And we usually do do that at like the very end.
But I just want to make, because now we're dealing with if they get filled, then we have overflow and that will figure issues.
I think one of the safeguards, nothing's ever perfect, but one of the safeguards is that it's not like we dig out the dirt and we put down the plastic. No, we dig out the dirt, we put down the plastic, and then on top of that, you have the infiltration bedding material, which acts as a filtration, if you would. So it's not like the, the dirty water coming off the streets is going right into this plastic liner and can't find its way out. No, it's going to filter through the sands, it gets biodegraded, and then it gets filtered out, so.
And I think with most, and really any private stormwater pond in, in Town One Two, if there's issues that are identified, for example, if water staging up and the facility's not de-watering, so it's not emptying water over an appropriate amount of time, that's a point where the property owner has signed an operation and maintenance agreement to make sure that the facility is operating as designed and as intended. So, you know, that's the area that in the future, if there's any issues that the town has to kind of come back to the owner and say, we got to get this fixed, there's issues, it's not.
So it is detention totally, not retention.
So this is, this is it's detaining it, but you could also say it's a, you know, before they were coming in with it's an infiltration facility, because we are going to be infiltrating some water, so it's going to detain it, it still has an outlet structure that would allow water to stage up and overflow into. So, you know, that would prevent it from overflowing the sides of the basin.
Sorry, no, that's okay, that was a good conversation, so, okay, the survey, sure. So I don't know if we have anything on a plan that can show this, I do have a handout that we can pass around if that's.
Didn't you, you provided a set of construction drawings for the downstream properties?
Yeah, I, I just don't have the.
I didn't know if in the email, if you were copied with that RJ in which it, it showed that, but in nineteen ninety-three, there was a subdivision constructed just below us, that's how all those houses ended up off the right-hand side of your drawing there. And when that was constructed, it was done by Barrel, so that he could expand his property backward is how he acquired it, and when he did that, he put in some storm sewer systems between the commercial Chevrolet dealership and those houses. And that is the storm sewer that we're discharging into. And it's my understanding that there is a question now as to the validity of those construction drawings of nineteen ninety-three.
It's not a question, it's those are not as-built conditions, so we want to verify thirty years later that the system still has the capacity, there's no failures that, because this pond has a connection into that town-owned storm sewer system, we're going to make a connection into it. We want to make sure in this, you know, point in time that we have capacity in those existing storm sewer pipes to carry this outflow. Just because at the point where the pond is outflowing, it's seeing more rates, so it's receiving water faster than the post-construction conditions per their design than in the, the existing pre-construction conditions. So the alternative that we had provided was if they can get that rate at that point below the pre-conditions, they would not have to do the survey. But that has some implications to changing the size of their facilities, so they've opted to do a survey of the downstream sewer system that then leads into a town-owned basin in the Ashley Hills neighborhood.
And so that's to determine that this system can take on the increased rate
Yes.
from this new development.
Yes.
And who, who does that investigation?
They would, yeah, yeah.
So. KU Resources is our project engineer, they've done all the stormwater, and they will be doing the survey. They sent a letter for draft review today, and it looked like staff was accepting that that will go out to, I think there's only three or four property owners.
Four or five residents that they're going to notify, they're gonna do a survey, the storm sewers in the old drawings we have do show twenty-foot wide easement. So they would access through that existing easement, but we're going to obviously notify the residents that they'll be out there completing a survey.
We, we really won't be surveying, in the technical sense, their property lines or their topography or anything else, basically, we're going to walk up the line, we're going to shoot the various inlets along the way, and verify that the pipe sizes were twelve, fifteen, eighteen, whatever they are in size. And once they know what the various inverts along the way, they can do the routing capacities, and then we can answer the question to show what the current as-built situation is.
Are they going to video the line at all to show that it hasn't broken or roots aren't through it or whatever?
We did not require them to do that. Today, per comments, it's just the survey of the infrastructure itself, since it's town-owned facility is there. But, I mean, I don't know if that's something you would like to explore at this point.
Maybe we could talk about it a little more, I know that I wanted to say it on the spot, but.
Oh, does the town, I mean, am I understanding there's a gap between where this will discharge off their property and a town facility? So is there a, a section of stormwater that's being maintained or not being maintained by someone other than the town?
Township, uh, town owns all of the pipe we are being asked to survey.
So they own whatever Barrel put in.
Yes, it was dedicated to them in nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah, it's not done as much anymore, I would say.
Just wanted to understand.
Yeah, yeah, they're just adding, I believe it's two runs of pipe that will be owned by Barrel moving forward to make that connection. I believe that's, I think, I see it's like one out and then one into the existing town-owned inlet.
Excuse me. They're going to build it, but Barrel's going to own it, no, I'm.
Oh, Schultz Ford, I'm sorry, Barrel built it way back in ninety-three.
I've heard Schultz and stuff.
I apologize.
All of the, the, the discharge from our detention basin is a pipe, that pipe out goes out and turns, and it stops within, you know, it goes directly into their, to into the township-owned inlet. So we're going directly into it, so.
Maybe I heard wrong.
It's, she did say Barrel.
Yeah, it looks like there is one additional inlet that's being proposed. So, um. It goes from the outlet structure to a new inlet and then into the town.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be a, a small section that we had asked to, just making sure that the agreements for that are set up at a later time as well with those property owners, since we're making some changes back there.
So, okay. Thank you very much, everybody, for the explanation. I think it's good sometimes when we get into these issues to give a little background as to exactly what is going on.
Yes, I know there's a lot of concern in general and development about stormwater, and we want to be clear, you know, what aspects are, are sticking points or things that we need to work through, rather than just give an impression that stormwater is scary and we don't know how to control, so.
Do you anticipate all that work to be done by next meeting? And reports filed and such?
I would think the stormwater side, our first discussion as to the, the liner and that stuff, that should be done within days.
Right.
They just need to finish the report, now that they know that the liner's been acceptable. And the survey's been lined up, those letters won't go out, so hopefully the survey will be done next week. So because there's really not much review on that, well, maybe we'll get some leniency that maybe if we submit that two weeks in advance of your February meeting, we'll still be allowed in, so. If we can be here in February.
The lady who handles that.
Yeah, we will, we'll submit it, and then you just tell us if we gave it to you timely enough. And I think we're good for review, extensions, right? I think we're good on that.
We've got you through February to do two full weeks ahead of the next meeting, you're looking at the nineteenth of February, or?
Yeah, so if, if that doesn't work out, then we'll just do another extension, it's certainly not our desire, but we'd like be done as, as much as you do.
Fair enough.
And we'll, you know, we'll do a timely review when it comes in, and we'll call Adam, Charlie, we can get on another call as quickly as possible if anything, you know, arises at that point.
Kelly's been very helpful with the discussions between KU Resources. I know that there's been a lot of back and forth between them, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, of course.
All right, so given that information, there are no reasons to make motions, we're not at the point yet. So unless there's further discussion, I think that should end it.
See you next month.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Item number three on the agenda, the review of rezoning application for block lot eight twenty-seven P three thirty-nine. It's the wooded area next to the Sisters of Divine Providence on Cumberland Road. And the applicant Rachel Carson Eco Village poses a mix of low-impact two and three-unit residential buildings as a future use.
So we, we have a couple folks from the projects here that they're going to be making a presentation. Before we get going, I just want to provide a little bit of background, so I've heard this question a couple times now from some of you who maybe were not on the commission when we did the Sisters of Divine Providence. The old residential facility, and then they also had that subdivision piece. If you look at the plan, you are not seeing things, there is indeed a tiny strip of land in between this property and the road.
Which road?
The Cumberland. Yes, this is, this property is not a corner lot, it would only use the Jews into Cumberland. Um, so from what I understand, when they did the Cumberland extension, that was built through property that at the time was UPMC's and for whatever reason, the way that the lines chopped up at that time, rather than just making the, the UPMC property terminated the one side of the road, ended up with a little bit of it on the other side, so technically this piece of property does not have any public frontage. However, we dealt with that at the time that we did the subdivision and land development for the Sisters of Divine Providence by requiring a condition of approval to be we would allow a new parcel to not have any public frontage as long as they secured a permanent, you know, impermeability access easement for UPMC, which is where this project would be proposing to enter the property, so that, that was all accomplished back at the time of um, of course, this is just rezoning, so while we may have some questions, comments, you know, whatnot about the plans as concept, it has not been reviewed for zoning compliance or for engineering details, so please keep that in mind. We should be focusing on neighborhood character and comprehensive plan agreement, so.
Just to be clear, if this were, excuse me, if this were to go through, then there would remain a piece of property along Cumberland Road between Cumberland Road and the proposed.
Yes, yes.
Eco Village.
Owned by UPMC.
That would remain UPMC.
Yes, and would remain SD. Don't.
And is what?
It'd remain SD zoning, they're only asking to
Yes.
change the zoning.
I, I would agree.
Yeah.
But I don't, I mean, is it even big enough?
Yeah, how big is it?
Is it even big enough to put anything if you needed to?
No. No, it's just awkward.
Yeah. Yeah, all right.
Sorry. No, no, his, Dan's question answered my question, thank you.
Okay. Uh.
Okay.
All right, so with that as background, if anyone would like to make a presentation, please come up and state your name, and we will be glad to listen.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Danes. I am a member of Rachel Carson Eco Village, and I'm also serving as the project manager for the project. Um, I will, I.
Just let me know when the.
Okay. Um. I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. I will explain tonight why we believe that the change of zoning is a good move for parcel two, this parcel has already been subdivided from the larger property owned by the Sisters of Divine Providence. Sister Michelle Bisbee, who is seated here, will also speak to this since they are the current property owners. Check. Okay. The property is an eight-acre site along, along the skinny UPMC property along Cumberland Road. It is currently owned by the Sisters of Divine Providence. They, it is also adjacent to the residential property zoned RM along Knoll Street, that small neighborhood to the east. We have met with those neighbors, we've provided information to let them know about this request. And we had a very good discussion with the neighbors last Saturday. We have also provided information to Susan Hulahan at Passivent and the, the acting president at La Roche. So we have made sure that all of our prospective neighbors are informed about what we're intending and proposing. Next. The site here is the, the current zoning, but you can see that the eight-acre property is outlined on this. We are requesting a change from the institutional zoning currently SD to residential, the moderate-density neighborhood zoning, which is already these, the zoning of the district right next door, so it's an expansion of the RM zone. As a small-scale homeownership development, this project is very much in character with the houses in that neighborhood. The change in zoning would protect their properties from large-scale institutional development that is permitted in the current zoning. To the west, the Sisters' new home, the Commons at Providence Heights, which is a permitted use in SD, is also residential in character. So we believe it is appropriate to consider parcel two a transition from one residential use to another. Next.
And if you don't mind, I'm just going to jump in with a little bit of context for the folks that weren't here when we were doing the whole zoning rewrite project, so. Um, the whole zoning rewrite project. So um. At that time, the subdivision of this parcel had already been done. Um, we were aware that the sisters were intending to market it, you know, at some point sooner than later. Um, but there had not been, you know, a buyer, really any significant project that was, you know, a couple, a couple. Questioning phone calls that I got about zoning, but nothing really um serious. So. We did have internal discussions about, you know, what do we want to do with this parcel? We know that they that it's not going to continue being part of Sisters of Divine Providence and ultimately. Um, you know, in in concert with the consultants, we thought, well, let's leave it the most equivalent district to what was, you know, the institutional I district before, which is now the special district campus district, basically. Um, but not necessarily with like a commitment that we definitely want this. To be exactly like what the Sisters of Divine Providence is or UPMC or whatnot, but rather. To allow the town an opportunity to hear whatever might come forward. Rather than kind of try to predetermine that, you know, so um. Just wanted to throw that out there that we understood it was possible. We might end up with a rezoning application at some point, but we didn't really want to preference what it was at the rewrite. So, okay, sorry to do your presentation, please.
No, thank you. Um, so that this slide shows the building envelope that's currently permitted on the site because. Um, the SD zone allows for a five story office building on that covers eighty percent of the. The area of the site and you can see that it is um distinctly out of character with the neighbors um to the to the east. Um, and next, these are of course the kinds of buildings that could be built there according to the current zoning. Um, the 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 site.
Ju- just so we can understand, I mean, the the whole footprint wouldn't be the building. You'd have to have parking and other things. So.
Absolutely.
Buffer. So I'm just.
No, but that actually is includes the required buffer.
And does it include parking that would be required for the five story building?
This is just like the the worst. This is the worst case envelope in which probably parking would be integrated into the building.
Well, I think it's also fair to to consider, you know. Whoever might develop this under SD. It doesn't have to be one building, you know, it could be a whole line of things around the perimeter. But but this is, but this is the uh, I guess, the outline of the extent.
The envelope, that's all, right?
And I'm all right with that. Put the whole building I've had.
Yeah, so so this was just to understand, but more importantly, this is a beautifully wooded site. And um any development of this extent would uh change the grading dramatically and would also. Eliminate a lot of the the trees.
Can I interrupt one more time? Is this site entirely in the wooded area or is portion of it in that slope that heads up toward the uh where the sister's home is?
No, it's entirely in.
So that's that's just a grass field, if you will.
That's right.
Kind of goes down to a point and then it heads up again and that's that's where the woods are.
Exactly.
This is entirely in the woods.
That's right.
Okay.
There's a little stream.
Yeah.
At at the lowest air and we're to the east of that stream.
Thank you.
So you're out of any wetland or anything because it's kind of wet?
Why don't we just?
Okay.
Yes, good question. Um, so. Um, next, uh, it's just the uh. Current zoning on the left and the proposed zoning on the right. Uh, we think that it is consistent, as we say, in terms of character, but also in terms of planning. It's consistent with the way that the boundaries of SD have met residential zones in other places. So um. Uh, let's go to the next one. Um. I know that you're not really reviewing the project itself here at this rezoning, but you probably. Would like to know a little bit about what we're proposing. And this is a co-housing development. It's very much like a typical residential, small scale, thirty-five units. But the difference is we don't have a residential developer who's putting this on the market. We have um a a group of people who would like to live here. Um, we have already sold twenty-five of the units. Um, and that group has been in process of of uh forming for about four years. We work together cooperatively and do the the work that it takes um to get us to the point where we're ready to start construction. So um, we have a professional team. That has been um working with us since the beginning to um do the uh architecture and the engineering. Uh, but we are designing this for a sustainable lifestyle. And to do that, we are building to um certification by the Passive House Institute of the United States. That means that all of these buildings will be super insulated. Um, they will have triple pane windows. Um, they will be um as as carbon neutral as we can make them. And they um are in um intended to be a demonstration. So that the fact that we are next door to La Roche as well as to the sisters. Uh, means that we are looking forward to cooperating with students. Um, who are interested in learning these technologies and ways ways of living. Um, so our goal is not just to do um, not just to avoid doing harm to a beautiful site. But to contribute in a positive way to our natural environment and to be good neighbors to to our neighbors. Um, next. So um, four years ago, we started out. When we were invited by Chatham University to develop this project on their Eden Hall campus in Richland Township. In just the past few months, the university, which has been in financial and governance problems. Informed us that we would not have access to that site. At that point, we had already committed, as I mentioned, um, over uh half of the units. So we began searching for a new. Site in the area of five to ten acres. It was very providential that we learned that the sisters were interested in developing this parcel. And um, we met with the sisters and realized how closely our vision and the sisters' mission align. We look forward to working with the sisters and taking part in classes and research projects and other activities at La Roche. Um, next. Uh, when we began the project, um, as I said, we hired a team of experienced professionals. To design this as an eco-friendly community. Our goals are to respect and enhance the ecosystems on the site. Um, we have an ecology team to help learn about that site. Um, to minimize disturbance to the land and the forest and to build healthy, energy conserving houses. From um, as I mentioned, we we are planning on passive house certification. Um, we have also been working with a an off-site fabricator. Um, this is a company that specializes in high-performance building. In panels in a factory. So we worked with them on the design of the buildings. And then they um ran them it through a computer program, which then turned them into panels and. Cut them and assembled them um in a way that it meets the requirements of the certification. Those panels are complete and they are now in storage in that facility outside of Baltimore. So we are ready to start construction. We were ready last spring, thinking that we would be under construction. On the uh Chatham campus. Um, it will, because we have this construction in the factory. It means that not only is the the quality of that um construction. Better for its it's being done in the factory, but it means that our construction time is about half of what it would. Conventionally be. So we're looking at um the entire construction process taking only ten months or less. Um. So next. You can see the factory there. Our houses are designed in the tradition of forest cabins with sloping roofs and generous porches. As part of our commitment to sustainable living, they are modest in size. They have fiber cement board and battened siding and shingle roofs. Next. In order to determine the feasibility of this project, we commissioned a tree study. That has identified the location, size and species of every tree on the property. We also had a stream and wetland delineation. Um, our goal is to protect the character of the site. Um, minimizing regrading and paving and locating the buildings in small, open areas. On the site, there are um intermittent and ephemeral streams. Um, the uh largest of the intermittent stream is running through the the site and. You can see there's a, if you can see the green dashed line on the um on that. Map, I know.
All the way to the bottom or is it elsewhere?
There are several.
I'm guessing it goes.
Wherever you, yes, it goes through the center. And wherever you see that green dash line.
Ah, here we go. You printed it right there. It's a, you can follow my my pointer on the screen. This is the the largest one. And that's right through the corner. Yeah.
Exactly. So.
Toward the bottom.
Is that draining the subdivision?
No.
No?
It only drains the local area. Um, we uh, we have met with. Um, not only Kelly and her team, but we've met with the Allegheny County Conservation District to review this. Um, we have two wetlands. One is down there at that notch, right, right there at the southern. Um, center of the site and um we we were aware of that just by walking around. Um, but there is a second one that apparently was created by the construction of Cumberland Road. And it's. It sits right in, right at the at the um access easement. So the only place we're allowed to come in on the site is also right at the edge of that little wet area. That's one reason why we met with the Conservation District. We would apply for a GP seven permit. Allowing us to um cross that with uh paving to get the cars to the parking lot in the corner. Um, but uh, in general, we can accomplish what we're looking at with this site plan. With a few waivers that the Conservation District and um Kelly's team thought would be uh likely. And also that GP seven permit. Um, so um, the. Site plan that you'll see or that you've seen here evolved out of these meetings. It changed every time we had a meeting. And we learned no new requirements. For example, in addition to getting RJ's input very at the very beginning. Um, we also had a meeting with um Jeff Wisner to. Um, understand the international fire code requirements. So we adopted, we we adapted the site plan for that. When we got that delineation study, we had to make another a change to the to the arrangement, but. What we have now um is the the result of those consultations and we are very appreciative of of the. Feedback that we've gotten so far. The houses are clustered uh there you see um. And the units are side by side. So the most of the buildings are duplex buildings. Um, and then there's a building that has three units in it. Those are smaller units. There are three of those. Uh, and the orange building is a small clubhouse or what we call our common house. Where there is a kitchen and a a dining room and some space for meetings. Um. The um. Parking in a community like this is um something that we try not to disrupt. The the social connections or the ecology of the site. So to do that, we keep the cars at the edge. And that's why you see the parking uh all at the entrance uh in the corner of the site. Uh, buffered a around with with planting. Um, but there are thirty-five spaces in that. Lot. Um, these units are sold with one space per unit, one parking space per unit. The zoning code requires two. The the sisters have extra parking and um there is an area. Uh, behind the garage, the maintenance garage near the site that um will have thirty-five unit. Uh, thirty-five parking spaces that are designated for zoning purposes for the the Eco Village.
How would they access those? Just out of curiosity.
Through from Babcock Boulevard.
Yeah, so I'll I'll give a little bit of a background from some of the pre-app conversations we had here. So. It's my understanding that basically the consumers potentially of of these residential units like aren't people that really have cars that often. However, well, so. There are a couple of different options and this is something that we've talked about more generally, but I'm going to have to drill down into the Saldo if. This rezoning is approved because of course if it's not, this is really all kind of point, right? But um, we have some flexibility. That that was built into the Saldo in terms of cross-boundary parking agreements, you know, not to necessarily waive the number of parking spaces. But to provide alternative arrangements if parking, you know, cannot be met in a very traditional manner because we didn't want to necessarily preference. You know, the the high parking counts and things like that. So um. To actually reduce the parking count per unit, that would be, that would need to be a variance request. Whereas providing alternative parking arrangements that are, you know, contractual and we've reviewed and said we're comfortable with. Would be a modification request through the Saldo. Um, so.
My concern with that is if they're several thousand feet away.
Yeah.
I don't want to set a precedent where someone can be proposing that.
Um.
Other instance.
And this is a, this is a fairly, this is a fairly good distance from the thirty-five extra.
Yeah.
To this, to this site because.
So you know, so.
That that here sports center is is that that's a hall.
Yeah. Yes, so so two things. One being unless we have another Eco Village come in, we're not really setting. Much of a precedent for something that isn't comparable to this. Yes, that's. Where this goes. I mean, I think it's a little bit preliminary to say we're going to do this, we're going to do that. One of the zoning review.
Yeah.
Has not occurred yet. Um, but second is, you know. If what they're saying is we really don't have a need for this parking, but they are obligated through zoning code to theoretically provide it. I mean, realistically. This is not a situation where as long as a development like this remains what it is. That expectation of additional parking is really not going to change. Like this consumer that this is targeted at. Wants to live, you know, a very eco-conscious, low-car probably lifestyle. However, if they do have to walk all the way out there. That's consumer choice. Um, we're not telling people how how far is too far for them to walk on their own feet from their car. As long as we feel that it is satisfactorily meeting the performance standards and the intent of the code when it comes to a modification.
Are are there temporary parking spaces anywhere on on this map that I'm looking at?
Beyond the thirty-five.
I know there's thirty-five permanent.
Right.
But I understand in the Chatham. Proposal, there were temporary parking spaces at the location that the house.
No, well, yes, there was because um. Chat, because Richland Township um had the same two unit, two parking spaces per. Unit requirement, but we had a very limited area that Chatham would allow us to build on. And so we we located those second set of thirty-five. Spaces along the emergency fire route. That was considered acceptable by Richland Township. We did not like it. But they required those to be located there. Um, just because they required to see seventy parking spaces. Those were, those were the same as what we're. Those were, those were the same as what we're proposing on the sister's site.
Is the. The access in. Is there an access to the parking spaces from Cumberland, correct? And is there another access somewhere? Is the other access on Babcock?
No, you can see.
Or is it still on, is it both of them on?
It's the existing entrance on Cumberland that served the Commons Building.
It's kind of in between Cumberland crossing and Passamit.
That's right, yeah, it's, it's, there. It's, it's to the.
And you have, depending on where you are, you have to exit and enter in, in the same area. You, you can't go through the.
There's no traffic through there.
Yeah, this is all like a walking path situation.
How, how wide is the walking path?
Uh, the walking paths are three, three or four feet. It's, it will have carts, will have a little electric cart. For someone who's broken their ankle. But this is modeled on about, on a model that has been successful in about. A hundred and sixty other communities. So we know that people who choose to live this way enjoy living this way. And, and it's, it is a, like RJ said, it's a.
Can I ask you, if these access roads are not very wide. How, how do you handle emergency, fire, EMT? How do you handle that aspect of that with a walking path?
That we don't have to. This meets the international fire code. That's why we met with Jeff. So the, the fire truck can come, there are two twenty-foot driveways. Those are just fire lanes. You see the one on the, the east and the one on the west?
All the way to the rear of the property.
Yes.
Yeah, so to give some of the background from the pre-app.
And how wide is that just from that, how wide?
So. There were a couple of different configurations of fire access, I think a few iterations that we saw, you know, when, when Jeff. Our fire marshal was providing his feedback. I think there was maybe even one that was going to come off the back of the property to get to these units at some point. It looks like there's been some. You know, editing, I guess, down here because there's a certain. Distance by feet, which I want to say is maybe a hundred and fifty, but I know Jeff provided that and actually looked at this stuff, so. You know, don't take me spitballing is the only way we figured it out, but point being, you have to have that, no greater than that distance. To reach a unit from a point at which a fire truck can drive up. And so all of these units meet from either one access road or the other. I think it's a hundred and fifty feet. Yeah, that meets that, that distance requirement.
But there's hydrants and things on.
There will, there will, yes.
So that, we usually do that. At, at actual placement, like Jeff will review that when the land management plan comes in, but I would assume.
Yes.
That's a requirement, yeah.
So just a real quick question for you, for your parking, I'm, I'm, I won't say assume, that's not. It, it seems that with the lifestyle and the type of development that you're trying to create. Probably a lot of the people will have electric vehicles.
Yes.
So are you accommodating chargers in your parking?
So hypothetically. But I get, I get what you're trying to do. It's lovely. But you do have our own ordinances. And so as with Richland, hypothetically, if we said at a future date. Because today isn't about approving the parking or the configuration, so this is a, yes, it's a hypothetical. If, what would you, I hope you thought of this, what would you do if the town came back and said. Thirty-five parking spaces is simply insufficient under our code. What would you do? How would you solve that, that problem? Because I assume.
That's the case.
No, I'm not at all. Hypothetical. The, it would require significant grading and it would require taking down some three-hundred-year-old trees. That sounds awful. There is no option other than that. We have five hundred trees. They, they are magnificent. We're doing everything we can to preserve them. Was there, would there not be, I mean, again, it sounds like the Richland conversation all over again, but. Could the site potentially accommodate? On your emergency lanes, a widening of those simply so that they could potentially accommodate additional parking? Because, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't know that people are going to live here, but I assume they have friends who might actually have cars. And they might have an electric cars, but that's two cars per person. Well, we, we have. We, we have. Uh, the, the fire lanes, but if we widen them, we take down those trees. Just wondering if you had thought through.
Oh, yeah.
If, since we've already been through it once with Richland, what could potentially be a discussion in the, in the future? Absolutely, and that, that's the trade-off. And. It's a very, it's a very lovely concept. And, and I would have to say that we would be willing to ask our visitors to walk. From the, the, the parking across the meadow to come to the, to the site. I don't think that would be a hardship.
Is it lit?
Is it?
Lighted?
There is some lighting, but we would have to look carefully at the whole lighting.
Safety.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And again, I mean, as, as we pointed out, you know, we haven't reviewed it, you know, whatever. But I, I guess with the parking, there are two directions that this could go, you know, one being modification request pathway, one being variance, you know. I think at least in the pre-application meetings, we've mostly discussed potential for a modification request. Because standards for that are simply, does it provide a result that is equal to or better than the code as written? They're not precedent-setting, they're largely discretionary, you know, it's based on the recommendation of this body in the final vote of council. Of course, variances are more arduous, you have to prove hardship. You know, it's up to them to make the argument whether, whether that's present or not, but that would be relating to if they chose the path of modifying the parking count per unit. Rather than providing alternative arrangements to still meet the full parking count. So, you know, if this is approved and we get to that stage, I'm sure there would be more discussion between the town and applicant about which way they're going to go. But something would certainly.
People also know what they're applying.
Right, right. Yeah, that's a thing. Would, would I do it? No, I don't really like to walk that far and I'm very cold very easily, however. I would simply just not buy one of these if I.
What's the distance to the furthest unit from the parking?
It, it's a, a good five hundred feet. But we, we don't expect to. Yeah, I actually thought it was further. But this is figured out. I mean, there will be carts at the, at the parking lot for people to take.
Like golf carts, carts?
There will be maybe one golf cart, but I mean little carts.
Oh.
So that nobody is hauling bags. It, it's, and as I say, we're basing this on recommendations and visits to other communities. So we.
And you already have twenty-five people that are bought into the concept.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we have even more than that who are still in the process of, of considering this, so. And I'll just show you the last slide and then, this is. The one, yeah, just the one before that is the, shows you a cross-section through the site with the Knoll Street. Neighbors to the right, the high part of the hill, going down to the stream in the center. And then over on the left, you see the, the clubhouse, the community house. But that is, gives you an idea of how we intend to kind of nestle these buildings in, within the, the wooded. Character of this, the site and by, by keeping them small, we can do that.
And what you, is there, you have mentioned a size, how many square feet you're thinking of each unit or?
They, they range from five hundred square foot studio to eighteen hundred square foot, uh, two-bedroom units. I, I'll be happy to explain all of it to you.
I was just curious.
A couple of questions, but I'll hold off if anybody else has questions. We'll, we'll chime in more already. Okay. How is the ownership of this property designed?
The, the property will be transferred into the ownership of Rachel Carson Eco Village from the sisters. Once we have approvals, the ownership of the units is condominium.
And, and that's part of why they can even have this conversation with how the access roads are. Yeah.
Okay, and, and if, if somebody wants to, some of these first thirty-five people, then somebody wants to sell. What does that require?
When we purchase the unit, it's with an agreement that when we sell, it's to a buyer on the waiting list. The waiting list is formed of people who have visited, understand what is expected of them. And what the, the character of this place is, so that it.
Can someone be vetoed?
Um, actually, that's, yes, I suppose that can happen, but it doesn't happen.
Well, but it can happen, that's my point. So someone, if for whatever reason someone wants to move in, it doesn't meet.
Right, they, they don't. They don't get to purchase the unit.
Okay. So that's a restriction that you're imposing on this property.
That's right. The idea is that this is a community where people work together, know each other, agree to a sustainable lifestyle. And it continues over generations. And many of these communities have existed since the nineties.
Yeah, they, we, they don't seem to have much made it out to our region, but it's something that I've at least read about.
Who, who maintains, who maintains the property? The, of the infrastructure in here? Is it HOA maintains all of it, or the, does township own anything in there?
It's the condominium association.
And, and did you, did you ask the question of the furthest a home was from shopping?
This from the parking.
Oh, from the parking.
Yeah, from the parking.
From the parking, the, 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 the permanent parking lot.
Parking outside. I'm, I'm, the people who live here, and, and I recognize that you're trying to fit within the, the current ecosystem. Are, are you looking at garden space anywhere or?
Yes, not under the trees so much, but we've talked to the sisters about a community garden in the meadow area. Where we would do it collaboratively.
Permitted use in, in most districts. I suppose I'd have to double check and see if there were any zoning issues, but we did, we did actually.
And the overall density, it's how many units?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five for the property. Just, is the property being sold to this?
Yes.
Or is it a lease, a hundred year lease?
It will be, the ownership will be transferred.
Uh, I, I just have a question. I mean, I appreciate that this is just conceptual at this point and that it's not part of the rezoning, but. Have, has there been any thoughts given to the stormwater?
We have conceptual stormwater.
And, and how would that be done?
Distributed into small rain gardens around the site. And then they, it becomes part of the existing stormwater system.
Sure.
Yeah, and that's one reason why we went to Kelly, to, to just double check that we were headed in a good direction.
Sure.
It's a great direction, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to pass up Mark, even though you're new, but you must have some questions.
If, if I could, if we could share, what was the reaction for the, the meeting with the stakeholder, which was great? But particularly the, the folks on the, on Knoll Street.
They had a lot of questions, but they were. They were, I guess I would say they were generally satisfied with the answers. They, they were concerned about the siren that goes off at the firehouse. To make sure we know that we're going to have a siren and. They, they other, otherwise asked if the trees would be cut down. Those are the kinds of questions that they had, but we, we had a really very amiable time together. We spent some time just getting to know each other and it was, and, and the sisters hosted the, the meeting, the Kern Center. So it was, it was really.
And I'll, I'll note that that's a very interesting piece of information, because Mark, you missed this by but a few months that we just had. On the other side of that residential development, a rezoning request for a parcel that is essentially landlocked by commercial. But is residential to match that commercial parcel. And pretty much the whole neighborhood came out in opposition to that, so this is a neighborhood that is not shy. But that said, once the public hearing is scheduled, we always send notification letters to any adjacent property owners. So if anyone was missed, you know, in, in their own voluntary outreach, they will. Town Council Public Hearing is.
And these folks came in for planning, meaning not.
Right.
Prior to the public hearing.
We did, to be fair, we did, there was, I think Dan requested that we send out those notification letters early, which, you know. Yeah, but yes, they did, they did come out. I imagine if you've spoken to them already and they were concerned, we would.
They, they told us.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they, they told us about that.
Yeah.
I mean. Just thinking of a property owner on Knoll, Knoll Street or Drive and. Give me the, if you give me the PowerPoint piece, this is what we could build versus this is what we would like to build.
Yeah.
I think for a residential property owner, that's, that's not a bad option.
New question.
RJ, how would this style work? Like if we reconsider these apartments or something like that within some larger plan? Would that be allowed in the MN district?
Well, so this is RM.
Whatever this district is proposing rezoning.
Yeah, so I'm just to clarify, because the answer for. They, I believe, do not have true apartment complexes allowed use. But single-family duplex and townhomes are all allowed, so these three units would be considered townhomes.
Is there a requirement of, of a specific individual lot?
Not to my recollection.
The. I'm just thinking to the last meeting we had. Whatever that townhouse is off of Ingamar. I mean, we, we ran that developer through the wringer on fire access. Emergency vehicle access.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, this, the proposed use here is so integral to the rezoning that I have a hard time differentiating between the pure rezoning. And to this use. To me, this is, this is worse than the emergency access concerns associated with that townhouse. Where there is actually a road that was going to go right.
That's where I think, and, sorry, this is context that you won't have, this is just another plan that we're also discussing at this time. I think the fire access concerns became an issue at our most recent meeting. Because they then, they were initially proposing essentially extending the private road with a hammerhead turnaround. And the fire marshal was okay with that. But then there were so many other issues of grading, placement, you know. Whether the road was, I mean, there were just so many modification requests. I think we were up to seven or eight. At that point, with that configuration, that we had told them, we need to see some more work on this. And then when they came back, that plan, the revised plan no longer had. Like what would be equivalent to a town standard road? It was now just like a driveway that didn't need town road standards. And so then the emergency access really became a concern. The fire marshal did not have a chance to, to look at that plan, but you know, those were some of the things that changed that became more of an issue. I don't have.
They were, they were fee simple.
Right, and they were fee simple, so one of the other modification questions was, are we allowing for subdivisions of lots? That have no public frontage, but they have functional private road frontage, you know, it's more or less the same versus are we letting them? no public frontage, but they have functional private road front- frontage? You know, it's more or less the same versus are we letting them subdivide off the driveway and create like bait flag lots or something, which was a bit of a bridge too far in our discussion at that time. So um, since they would be doing this as a condominium association, that is not an issue. Uh, again, I I have not thought very, very hard about the duplex versus townhome, you know, with it. Townhomes are allowed. Generally, our limit is per building, eight units per building, I believe it is, but not how many are on the lot. Like, we don't have a unit density limit. It's basically what can the site support with infrastructure and meeting or zoning requirements. So you know, I I don't want to give an answer and say, yes, this is fine, and this is how it'll work, because frankly, I haven't done enough homework to confidently say this, this and that. But in my conversations with them during pre-application, other than the parking count issue, um, and I mean, they they've probably spent more time with the fire marshal than any of the applications I've seen come through so far. So um, we'll see, you know, if this is approved, if there are more issues that we need to work through. It's certainly an unusual project. Um, but.
I guess my concern, or not my concern, my overall position is just one of consistency where I have no problems with buildings in the woods, but if God forbid, something were to happen with someone, the ambulance or, you know, whatever is not going to pull right up front. They're gonna.
Sure.
Have to haul across a a walkway or something like that. Where that to me is at least as problematic an access point as driving up a driveway that's not a town spec driveway.
Right.
And so, you know, when I look at the two things at the same time, I I need to see a reason why one is treated differently than the other.
So I think I have, I.
Now, granted, this one is here for us to do something. The other one is for discussion and it's an ongoing. I I get that, but but to me.
Yeah, I think also, it's probably fair to note that we don't confer with the ambulance authority when it comes to any type, whether it's land development, rezoning, whatever. Like, we don't talk to them. We talk to the fire marshal for review per the IFC, the International Fire Code. Um, but I, you like, I think point well taken and certainly if this moves forward, um, there is, there is an opportunity for more discussion about what does that look like? You know, do you have something in your residential disclosures or the contracts or whatever for how to, like, what is, what is the book path? Is that something that they can quickly get from the driveline to the units? Um, but you know, we don't limit if somebody were to buy a a ten-acre lot and decided they wanted to put their house smack in the middle of it and they used a private drive that an ambulance could not access, we wouldn't tell them no. That would be their right as a consumer to make that choice, as long as they were meeting all of the other code requirements. Um, of course, this is more than one house, but I still think it's.
But I think that was a differentiating factor.
But.
As part of that ridge, where if there was just one house at the end of a twelve-hundred-foot roadway, it is what it is. But my understanding was that, and this is not a cul-de-sac length issue, but.
Right.
The cul-de-sac length issue came up because that was the sole means of access to multiple different dwellings, where you couldn't necessarily say, you decided to build there, so.
We did talk about that in pre-app.
It was multiple different lots.
Yeah.
So that.
Distinction.
Well.
To me, it makes a huge distinction, but so.
The cul-de-sac length is an issue whether it's one, one unit or a thousand, you know, but I.
But we've already.
I remember very early on in the pre-app, we discussed that eight hundred foot length and said, look, this isn't a road, you know, technically this may not apply. However, in keeping with the spirit of the code, please try to limit your driveway length to eight hundred feet or less to meet theoretically that requirement. Is it, so I know this has been reconfigured, is it still?
Yes, it is less and we we did all this reconfiguration in order to meet the International Fire Code requirements. We want this to be a safe development and we're not a developer looking for profit. We are the residents of this um, community, so we're much more like that homeowner who decides that that driveway is sufficiently safe. We are working with the fire marshal to make sure that we meet those requirements, but we're also as individuals, making sure that we have a a path that a stretcher can roll on into the house. That's, that's, you know, worst case, but it's also useful if you have a stroller, right? Or if you have a cart that's bringing groceries. You know, there are a lot of ways in which their access is important, but not by car or truck everywhere. That's the difference. You know, so as long as we meet those requirements, um, we're we're trying to be very attentive to uh, making sure and and everyone who is part of this is um, part of reviewing the the site plan and giving feedback. So everyone is aware that this is the um, the the configuration.
And could you elaborate some more on, it was one of the earlier slides with the in the current zoning, this is what could go in there.
Right.
So therefore, this plan is better than that.
Yes.
That rationale for why the.
The current zoning allows.
Has to change.
A five-story building and that envelope is up to eighty percent of the the property that, um, the the commercial or or institutional development of this for an office building or s- some similar medical-related facility would require um, a a considerable um, uh, impermeable surface, whether it's parking or building, right? Um, but the if you look at what's being built in terms of five-story office buildings, those illustrations give you a good example of what is allowed by right on this property right now. All you'd have to do is grade it flat.
But it doesn't have, there's no, nothing that that you're aware of standing right out there right now that this is going to happen. It could be left as woods perpetuity, to your knowledge, right? Like, this isn't a rezoning because we're gonna get one of these things.
No, no, it's not my.
Right.
It's not.
Months.
Uh, it's, it's not even our property, but you're right. There there's no looming development threatening the neighbors.
I mean, I've, I can at least say from the conversations I've had, nobody has gotten as far as to have a pre-application conversation, but the calls that I was receiving before speaking to these guys were senior living facilities and apartment complexes.
Yeah, more senior living and.
Yeah. So, and I mean, that was under the old zoning, you know, uh, nobody else's called sense, but like the the primary consumer at that time seemed to be.
Right. And now we have a small-scale residential to the east and we have a residential building to the west. Um, this zoning currently doesn't allow for residential development. So the only thing that could be built here is something that would be institutional or commercial. And that doesn't fit very well with the small-scale homeowner buildings along Noel Street, and it doesn't even fit well with the Sisters uh, campus. So we think that this rezoning, just on its own, just zoning it residential without regard to our particular project and all of its complexity, but it's a, it's, it's better as a residential um, property than it is as an institutional commercial property in terms of scale and use.
With all due respect, I I take some exception with your classifying the nuns four- or five-story building housing, I don't know how many nuns, as a residential community. It it res- it has nuns in residence, but that building is as much institutional as everything around it.
I know, it classified as institutional and it does have a a healthcare wing to it. Most of the building also is apartments. So that, it's only in that sense that I meant that it is similar to other senior living buildings.
Anyone?
I'm good, thank you.
Uh, Sean this way?
What's up?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I'm 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 gonna make a rare move here. Usually I don't say too much about rezoning. Um, I kind of let the chips fall where they may, but we have a new zoning code. We have a comprehensive plan that we're all supposed to be stewarding of, so probably worth it to go, my. Um, I find this concept to be fascinating. I, you know, I I don't think there's any point in me being coy about this. You know, this is a concept that I've seen in planning, practice, um, you know, different, different journals, informational articles, whatever. Um, I've not seen one in the Pittsburgh region, and if I'm correct, there isn't Western Pennsylvania.
Right.
So it's certainly new to us. Um, Western Pennsylvania zoning is not necessarily uh, light years ahead of other regions. So I think that maybe that is part of the reason that we haven't seen in our region a development like this, because, I mean, we have a brand-new zoning code that is very flexible and we're still kind of going, well, will this work here? Can we tweak this here? The good news is, if this is something that this body chooses to recommend and town council chooses to approve, we have built a lot of flexibility into the new code so that if it is a equal or better result, you know, to what's on paper, we have the option to have some discretion to meet our community goals and comprehensive plan goals. Um, obviously, part of the question, although it is tied, Brendan, as you said, absolutely, and genuinely, this rezoning is tied to the use and how we're having this conversation. Um, but also just looking at the comprehensive plan and the districts in general, which is part of what we're charged to do when we review um, rezoning applications. You you know, I think with character in the district, you can certainly look at it both ways. Yes, it would be an existing, you know, an extension of the existing institutional use of these properties already. But yes, on the other hand, it also abuts RM, and so it's not a spot zoning issue, you know, it it can blend really either way. We haven't seen any residents come to this meeting, but as we said before, we're familiar that, you know, that that neighborhood is not shy, and I'm sure we'll hear from them if they don't reflect, you know, what's been passed on tonight. Not saying that they don't, you know, but but they'll come out if they feel differently. Um, I think that this is very interesting because we have as a community in a lot of the recent planning activities and major projects we've taken on um, really said that we want to prioritize green space. We want to prioritize ecological considerations in our development. We don't see people care enough about stormwater and about not taking trees down. That's pretty much the number one question that I get um, in my office when a development is pending and people start watching the meetings is, well, what if they take down all of the trees? You know, this is the first one I've seen where they don't really want to take down any trees if they can help it. And most of the exceptions that may be requested when we get to land development review seem to be related to trying to preserve the wooded character of this site. So um, you know, I don't vote, I just advise, uh, but I do think that there's certainly some opportunity here to do something different and for McCandless to kind of be a leader in welcoming a concept like this to Pittsburgh. So I offer that for your consideration.
I'd like to make a motion. I, from a pure planning standpoint and from the the um, coordination with the the current zoning map and law. Um, not stating that there are some challenges overall with the development as proposed that an RM classification for this site would be in keeping with um, the town's master plan, comprehensive plan, and um, consistent with current zoning.
Do we have a second?
Make a comment with my seconds.
Oh, well, okay, so let's, let's go with Sean actually hit me with the hand up first, but once two motions have been made, discussion may occur upon the motion, so.
I I just, I just wanted to state my reasoning. Um, in a perfect world, I'd prefer that this beautifully wooded woodland state is perfectly perfect woodland, but I understand that's not realistic in this day and age. While I'm not giving a stamp of approval by wanting to make this zoning change um, to your proposal, I do think it is unique. I think it is fascinating. Um, I hope that you're successful in the future in it. There's no guarantees to that, but um, I do, as as Anne said, believe that the more appropriate zoning for this particular parcel of land is RM as opposed to um, the current zoning. So I am in favor of the rezoning.
Do we have any more discussion before we take a vote?
Well, yeah, well, and I'll say, I I perhaps take a different view, and that is, we created special districts for a reason. Um, and this, if I'm not mistaken, is the largest aggregation of properties across the street with the hospital, the nun's property, the the college. If I'm not mistaken, that's the largest aggregation of properties that we have created as a special district. And I, since this is a zoning issue, and we've talked about a lot of the minutia that is not really where we should be. Um, I have at least a concern that what we're doing is taking that large area that had a real purpose in this, in the town of McCandless for institutional-type settings and buildings and places we could put somebody who came in and wanted to build something of that nature. And we would divide that up and not allow that for a large portion of this. Uh, if 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 your proposal were in an undeveloped property, I think it's a wonderful uh, wonderful idea. Uh, but it's right in the middle of something that we created for a reason. And now we're being asked to change that fundamental reason as to why we created it in the first place, and I, therefore, I have some concerns.
It's it's a boundary condition. This is eight acres out of a very large, about a hundred and fifty-acre special district. This is the only way to preserve the quality of that site.
Oh, and I think there's also maybe, and look, I wasn't here when we did the old zoning map. I wasn't anywhere. Um, but I think I don't, I I don't want to take away from the hard work that people put in over many, many years and decades to be intentional about zoning the town. But I think it would be a little more generous to say that we did that on purpose as opposed to that whole thing was owned by La Roche and then the old zoning scheme, or excuse me, was it not?
It was.
I apologize. I, the, by, yes.
Sure.
Yes. Um, let me just finish the the sentence, because I I did say something a little silly, so I should correct myself. Um, the properties there were owned entirely by the Sisters in the Northern End, yes? Yes, okay. And and La Roche was eventually not subdivided, you know, but like broke off from the Sisters property. Okay, well then, you know what? Let me stop. Please correct me.
Well, my name is Sister Michelle Bisbee and I'm the current elected leader of the Sisters of Divine Providence. And so I'm really delighted to have an opportunity to kind of present our context for not just this piece of property, but maybe for who and what we are in McCandless. And maybe this is a long time in coming, because I don't know that we've ever have had this opportunity before, so I thank you for indulging. Uh, the Sisters of Divine Providence came to the United States in eighteen seventy-six from Germany. And they first established themselves in the east end of Pittsburgh with two different motherhouses. They grew in numbers very, very quickly. Their mission was to really serve German immigrants in that area. After much searching, they bought the Krezer Farm on October twentieth nineteen twenty-four. And that became where they built their third motherhouse. Um, workmen were hired to live on the property, to care for the animals, the fields, the orchards. And then the place was prizened, Providence Heights, and that was well over a hundred acres of that farm. And so for the last one hundred years, we've cared for the property and have used it to respond to the needs of each age. We are the sponsoring members of La Roche University. Uh, that's our land, which we sold to La Roche. So they're a separate entity, but they're under our sponsorship so that um, we have reserved powers that have to do We have reserved powers that have to do with the mission. With the hiring of a new president and anything that they do with that land and property. So even though it's separately incorporated by La Roche University, it still is under our purveyance. When that castle-like building was constructed, it was intended to house five hundred people. And most of those were young women who were nuns, but some of them were also Alpha School boarding students. And at that point, the Alpha School really took care of children. And boarded them when their parents were not able to care for them. When that mission changed, that whole um understanding of the Alpha School also changed. So when it was built, there were few private bathrooms. There were many, many large communal spaces and very long halls. Today, the population of the nuns is not the same. And so the needs of the residents of that big castle-like building changed. And that's why we built the new residence, which is called the Commons at Providence Heights. And it was built to take care of. About eighty-three nuns currently. Um, some of them in um, um, a healthcare facility that's not licensed. It's taking care of our own in our own home. Some people are in single rooms. Some people are in single apartments and some people are in double apartments. Our realization is that our window of influence in this area in the United States even is limited. You know, we're aging, we don't have new members. So we're concerned about our legacy. We're concerned about our property. And so every five years, we meet together to determine our future direction and to elect leadership. When we last met in the fall of twenty twenty-one, we were keenly aware of our diminishment in numbers. Of the drastic change in our median age and about the diminishment of our resources. And so one of the things we were looking at was what, what do we sell? How do we get alternative sources of revenue? But more than that, we felt wored by the God of Providence. Who we see as the God of possibilities, to commit ourself and our resources to the needs of our time. And at that particular meeting, we pledged to each other that we would pursue ecological justice. Sustainable living and address the contributions that we have made to the climate crisis. And to see what we could do to remedy those situations. We established committees to examine the issues, to determine how we might best participate. With a particular focus on our property at Providence Heights. We're currently in the midst of a carbon assessment to define ways to lower our own carbon ambitions. And all of this is to say that we were delighted to enter into a partnership with the Rachel Carson Echo Village. Because with them, we found a seamless alignment of our current values and our hopes for the future. And knowing again that our influence has that short window of maybe twenty years. We have no doubt that our legacy is secure in their hands because of what they believe. And how they've gone about what they were doing. So we believe that the residential use of the site is really more appropriate to its context and its character. Than the institutional use that it's currently permitted. We cannot believe how fortunate we would be to be able to preserve those trees. There's no place else that has that kind of. Really almost virgin forest. Nothing was done to that land in the hundred years that we've owned it. And so there are trees that are there for much longer than that time. The, when we tried to sell that parcel, what people found as a problem were the trees and the water. And that's why they didn't want it. The people of the Ector Carson Village found the trees and the water as beneficial. And so it seemed to us more than a natural alignment, but really something that we wanted to support totally. So I thank you for your indulgence and hope that that gives you a sense of where we are. And if there'd be any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or try to.
I don't think. Thank you.
The, looking at the zoning map. Behind passive, the UPMC, what is it, Senior Communities? Is, is that zoned SD?
Um, well, yeah, let me, let me double check.
I'm pretty sure.
I honestly don't know off the top of my head. Okay, so, so it is. And I will tell you.
It's all owned by passive.
I, I will say, in the old zoning code, I believe. That property was zoned as R six, which is a. I, i- it's a residential zoning district that we did not carry forward into the new code and let me double check with the old map so that I'm not saying something made up. So it looks like some of it, some of it is R six. Um, and some of it was also institutional. R six. Was specifically senior oriented housing. It was. A zoning technique where you can create age restricted districts and it is not considered discrimination. We removed that designation. It doesn't specify it anymore in, in the new code. But I, I imagine that some of it was permitted. Probably independent living was in the R six portion, if anything. And probably assisted living was in the portion that was institutional because that would have qualified as a nursing.
So I guess what, what's the distinction though between residential? That passive or whatever community that is and why this has to be rezoned out of SD for this proposal?
Well, so part of it is just that. Everything that we're discussing, it's already happened there, was done under the old code and the old zoning definition. So I would honestly have to brush up on them a little bit to. At this point, to tell you exactly what happened and where, when, why. Um, but this. Proposal does not have an assisted living or a healthcare component. This is purely. Individuals that are basically voluntarily living in a collective. So it, it's, we would focus in the use on. You know, what are you actually doing in the structures, which is living in a duplex or a townhome? Um, which is not permitted in SD.
Just. Maybe a, a thought for the future, but it seems to me that this is more. Something that would align with a specialized district or, or something, a PRD versus just a straight. Zoning like Knoll Street or just. Or a single family detached residential.
I certainly.
Because I share Dan's concern. We've got an SD district for a reason. I don't have a problem post-use. It's just the zoning concept of it. And it seems our SD includes a lot of stuff of varying types. And why? This could not be done in the existing zone as proposed.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have any residential component. That is outside of the context of professional healthcare.
Um, Cumberland Woods is independent living and leased apartments, but within the context of a senior. Housing.
Yeah, and, and, and part of that probably had to do with R six as well. I mean, that was all before my time. Prior to my error about property ownership, you know, kind of what I was getting at is. Yes, we do, we do have institutional districts, you know, the institutional district that turned into SD and. Civic district CD, you know, that's, that's what that district ended up splitting into. The way that we slotted them were um. Civic district CD was publicly owned property. And everything else that was kind of campus-y or, you know, had a civic function, but was not owned by a government entity. Was slotted into SD. However, uh, you know, as, as Sister Bisbee pointed out. The Providence Heights community had been there, um, probably actually since prior to the inception of zoning in the country. So I would imagine in the seventies, when we created the zoning scheme that we just moved away from. Um, we probably just owned that property as institutional or, you know, there was a different name, whatever it was. Because that was what was already there and there was no reason to chop up a parcel. Yes, it is where a lot of these civic institutional functions happen in the town. But I would not necessarily credit that to something that we did on purpose. I mean, actually McCandless Crossing was also zoned institutional. Didn't quite go in that direction.
Others?
I did, just, I mean, maybe I missed it, but so the redistricting. Um, to turn into an RM does not say that this is what the site's going to be used for.
Right.
It's just, so there could be another competing development. There could be another developer could come into this.
Yes.
And so that's again, I think, you know, more to your point of the redistricting piece. And then the other one, and again, playing the doubt. So this gets redistricted. Here comes a developer we don't know, probably more than likely. But then says, well, I had a development I wanted to put there in that special district and I, you know, saw your plan. So I want to take a residential and turn that into a special district and put my building in. Because you took one away. So, you know, so sort of like wetland mitigation, if that's a good point, right? You offset.
Yeah, so if a, if a big commercial building came in here and took out the wetlands in here and the streams, they could be in a position where they would be in. What's a joint permit? So a very long permitting process, which would involve wetland mitigation.
Right.
As one of the offset items potentially.
So that's right, that, that would be one of the, the risks. Would be if we to designate this, then you, that developer could come in. So I'd like to use this residential area and have it. Turned into an SD because this, you know, was taken away.
They, if what you're saying is if we rezone this to RM, then what happens if an institutional develop? Uh, they would have to go through the same process and apply to change the district back.
Right, he's speaking more to what the development bulk and density would, how it would impact this particular piece.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, you had, I mean, and, and that, and that's some of the. Challenges probably, you know, I think the, the sisters alluded to, and I certainly saw when I had scoping calls from developers was they would go. Well, there's strings to the property. I don't know what I'm going to do with this. You know, the grading is too wacky. Uh, we're going to disverge wetlands if we do this and that, you know, I mean, there was. There, uh, there were at least two or three that called and just couldn't figure out how to make the site work for anything that was a large building.
Thank you.
Okay, we apparently have a motion. And the motion, as I understand it, is to uh, actually vote on the change. Right, recommend it, uh, out of the commission.
Procedurally, I think we have to check that there's public comments before we vote.
You're right, we do. And I apologize. It looks like I forgot to put that on the agenda, so that is my fault. Thank you. Oh wait, no, I did on the other page. Okay. I guess.
Well, we've had some public comment. Is there any other public comment? And we don't have anybody.
I think we only have applicants here, so.
And nobody's online.
We don't do that anymore.
Okay, uh, so no public comment. And so the motion uh is before us. Is there a second?
We had Sean's.
Oh, we had Sean's second, alright.
Do we want to do a voice vote or just go straight to a roll call for this one?
I think a roll call.
Okay. Anne.
I have mixed feelings on this, uh. But I think I'll, I'll vote aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Brendan.
I'll vote yes when I'm with Al. I've got a lot of reservations.
Shelley.
Hi.
And I have reservations and I'll vote no.
Okay. Six to one, motion carries to recommend approval to town council for the rezoning only. Like the development.
You'll be spending some time with us.
So, um, just based on advertising timelines, I don't think we could even get an ad in the paper fast enough to hold this public hearing at the typical January. Meeting that we do, um, development items at, at town council. So most likely. This public hearing will end up scheduled for February twenty-sixth.
I just wonder if there's some considerations of the fact that we've already alerted neighbors to this.
This is a, an official legal ordinance amendment and, yeah, so we have to hit all the state targets for, for notice. In the new paperwork. Yeah, we as the town have to publish the ordinance line, so um, that's completely separate from. What we appreciate you did voluntarily, but, but as the town, we have. The requirements, so um, the soonest that we can do that uh on a town. So that will most likely be the case, but I will make sure to confirm that on our February agenda. Okay. Thank you everyone. Very good discussion.
Uh, the last item, not the last, but the next item on the agenda is item number four, the review. Of the modification request from Starbucks to waive the requirement to build a sidewalk as previously presented.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name's Adele Beeves. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. I'm here on behalf of Starbucks and we have Sue Federico from Starbucks as well on the Zoom call. Uh, we're here today to request your consideration for a waiver from town code section eleven oh four dot two thirty regarding sidewalks. And that is to allow us to forego the construction of a sidewalk from the intersection of McKnight Road and Blaser Drive. Into the site and through the um. Outdoor area adjacent to the building for Starbucks. Um, and this had been shown on a previously approved land development plan, which you may be familiar with. Um, but I do have a, a short presentation here just to give you some background as well. Would you be, thank you. Um, so just to refresh everyone's memory, uh, if you were involved in this process previously, um, the development. Was approved on December nineteenth of twenty twenty-two and through spring of twenty twenty-three through fall of twenty twenty-three. The uh, building permit was issued and the site modifications were constructed. Um, we then issued, I think after some discussion between the applicant, Kim Lee Horn and the township and Gateway, um. Issued a letter of intent indicating that Starbucks did intend to construct the sidewalk in accordance with applicable laws and plans and permits. Um. The store was issued a temporary certificate of occupancy. On November thirtieth to allow the store to open while we work this last remaining issue out and that expired in June thirtieth. Um, so. Um, and again, Bill Moldovan has been doing primarily all this work with, with Susco and Gateway, so I do, um. You know, want to acknowledge that there were some conversations that had been held over the past months and the decision to pursue this waiver request. Which is an option in your code, uh, that was decided to be undertaken. So we submitted the waiver request and we're here to present that and answer your questions.
Um, and I'm just going to jump in real quick. So I've gotten this question from a few different people even before we hit this meeting about. What's the deal with the temporary occupancy permit? Very typical for those to be issued when only sidewalks or landscaping, you know, sort of seasonal items are the remaining things, all other codes, development. Infrastructure, et cetera, has to be compliant with the plan before um, we consider that. So. Whether we had this waiver request in front of us or not, the temporary occupancy permit would still have, have finished.
So can I just make sure I understand in your application letter or your letter requesting the waiver? Did I understand you say you don't control the property that the sidewalk would be constructed on?
That is correct. The applicant is leasing a portion of the property and the sidewalk was shown on a. Piece that is not part of the lease.
So how would we require a developer to build a parking, build a sidewalk on a piece of property that they're not controlling?
What they presented to us.
Provide an alternative route that does include your leased property. Do you have an alternative?
Well, the route, um, there is no contiguousness between the leased parcel and the intersection. So there wouldn't be a physical route. There, there was discussion of potentially paying the fee in lieu. For a route that would stay within the Blaser Road right of way. That would be the.
Which perhaps, I mean, to be clear, like, that's just, that's not an option that a developer. Voluntarily activates, although it's something you can request, but we have to say that's. Okay, to allow that. Um, I, I would say at the time of. Plan review, first of all, this was just kind of an unusual situation in general because this would normally be a simple use change, but because of our very odd zoning. Of this parcel in the old code, we had to send it through a non-conforming special exception process. And one of the conditions of the zoning hearing board approving that is that they wanted to come, have it come through the land development review. Process regardless. At that time, I recall both parcels are owned by the same strip mall owner, basically. Um, so that really wasn't something we interrogated too much. Um, so that really wasn't something we interrogated too much further, because we kind of thought, okay, well, this must be something. You know, yes, and, and it was, and it was offered by the developer, so that's how we got.
I recall we had specific discussions about the sidewalk coming up from McKnight. Like, I'm not crazy, right? Like, I think that was a, a big, because I remember complaining about why couldn't there be crosswalk or more parking? On the Giant Eagle side as part of the overall access, and I think that was around when there was that unfortunate accident.
That happened shortly after, but yes.
Of, of pedestrian access concerns down.
Yeah, there's a curb cut at McKnight for a ramp.
The other day and just ends it grass.
Yeah.
I thought they put it in the sidewalk.
So that was where I believe the proposal had, you know. The connection.
Right, and the, the area of where it terminates now would be where we would propose to. Lay out a new sidewalk that would go into the Blasier Road right away, but we're asking for the fee in lieu, we would. Determine a route, as I understand, that we would come to an agreement between Gateway and the township and ourselves about what, what the route would look like. And then calculate the fee to construct that and pay that fee in lieu, and it would be identical to what's shown on the plan as it connects to McKnight and Blasier. But then it would bring, come around into the right of way.
Why can't a multinational company get a sidewalk easement in a little corner parking lot of McCandless?
That was, uh, was, uh, requested, but it was denied, that's, that's what I understand.
But you have a temporary occupancy permit and you haven't met the requirements to maintain your operation if you don't figure this out.
Right, so we, we will figure it out, that was the letter of intense purpose is to indicate to the township that we will figure this out. And I think the option right now is to construct it in the right of way or to pay a fee in lieu to construct it in the right of way. And we're, we're asking for the fee in lieu at this time, we just think that the money could be used by the township to provide connectivity. Somewhere else where it's more feasible to have a continuous route, because the nearest sidewalk, um, across McKnight is point three, four miles away. So even if we did build it, you still wouldn't have connectivity for a long time.
Where's the right of way? I mean, I see it there, but practically speaking, because that was also the entrance and the old drive-through where they put the.
It's the plan.
Yeah, I see it there, but I, I was just down there. I was down there the other day, because there's those plastic ballards. We had the issue with, with the fire truck going in, run them over, like.
Yeah.
Are they within the township right of way or are they? On the Starbucks side.
Those are on the property, in the property.
Yeah, the first one that starts the curve is right near the right of way line, this, this is what we're looking at, what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to them.
So that's pretty tight between my drive-through. And the public right of way.
The sidewalk, I mean, there's room there where the crossing is to be able to extend the crosswalk, uh, through that area though, so that's. What we would propose.
But then it would follow the, the public. Right of way around that curve, right?
Yeah.
And it looks like it narrows in there.
Well, it does.
Wides out to an apron down at McKnight.
That's correct, but there's enough room to install the required five-foot sidewalk.
So the route would be from McKnight and go around Blasier Drive, and ideally. Because I remember that. You all, I don't know if it was you or not, but weren't all that excited about having the. Walking path across your drive-through.
Correct.
That the ideal would be from McKnight around Blasier. In front of the Starbucks property leading up to your entrance.
That's correct, to bring it around so that it is not right at the end of the, the, right where the queuing begins.
For safety consideration. To the main entrance.
Correct, but if you brought it around a little bit further, then you'd get it out of the area where there'd be, you know, consistent queuing. And then you could enter into the facility or to the property from that point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, so you're coming up from McKnight, but just in the right of way, thank you.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, that would be, be more ideal.
It, yeah, would from a pedestrian safety standpoint, yeah.
Right, because it's not just, when, it's not just Starbucks customers. That will benefit from this, which is why we have the requirements that we do, because there are many people who work in that entire plaza. Who traverse that parking lot and need to get down to McKnight Road to get to the bus, um, across the street, so.
And I think, you know, um, what we're asking for today really is to allow the fee in lieu to be able to be applied, um, I understand that there will be subsequent discussions. And a presentation to internally to Gateway into the township about what the actual extent of it end up being. Um, similar to what I just described though, so.
So you're not, you're not really asking for. A waiver to, to not put in a sidewalk, you're asking for a payment in lieu of putting in a sidewalk. In a different location than was approved on the development plan.
Correct.
Is that a waiver?
I mean. It's a modification, you know, like. But I mean, we, we've standardized calling all things, it used to be waivers, exceptions, this, that, they're all just modification requests now. Um, I mean, I think, I think going around the right of way would actually be interlineal fee, but. Yeah, so, so one question I had, just to confirm, you're proposing the fee in lieu of would be the, a proposed alternative route. Because the one that is proposed cannot be constructed, so, okay.
Yes, great, we'll define, we'll agree upon the route, um, you know, administratively between us and then we will pay the fee in that amount.
And we drop off the pedestrians in a safer spot.
Correct.
But wait, is the fee in lieu, is there going to be a sidewalk there or no?
The fee in lieu would allow you to take the funds and build that sidewalk at such time as there was other connectivity or to use those funds somewhere else in the township. Where you could provide actual connectivity.
So just so, I'm not wrapped, so Starbucks, we require Starbucks to put in a sidewalk, right? And that can't happen in the location, right? So the options are for Starbucks to put in a sidewalk in the public right of way. Or for Starbucks to pay the township. For the privilege of not, Starbucks not putting the sidewalk in, so the township can spend Starbucks money to put in the sidewalk. See, indicated there's a need for a sidewalk.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Here.
But the ordinance has a provision in cases, in all cases, regardless of who's developing it, where there is not a sidewalk. Or connectivity within a certain distance that you can ask for this fee in lieu, so that's why we're doing it.
It's for me, but it seems to me the fact that we require a sidewalk or indicated a belief that a sidewalk in this area. Is useful for safety and connectivity, I'm having a hard time applying, we can't get a, a sidewalk.
Well, once you get beyond, once you get to McKnight, there's, there's point three, four miles traversing. An area with no sidewalk, that you'd have to traverse before you would get to another sidewalk. So Starbucks putting the sidewalk in today doesn't get the connectivity that you desire. It may one day, and at the time where there is a sidewalk constructed potentially around the adjacent parcel, that's between, there's an exhibit in here too.
Yeah, we, we only got slide three.
I mean, the other slides are just, you know, this is what we had previously submitted and had approved, um, the next couple shots are just more examples of, um. The aerial and what it looks like without the sidewalk.
Oh, this is actually, I should have slipped to that.
Yeah, this is the least area, I mean, the red line shows the least area, so you can see the sidewalk that we had previously proposed, it does not fall within that. But if you flip two more, you'll see a regional view, um. That should help, um, yeah, the, the, I think probably try and point, I wish I had a pointer, but. A point three, four miles to the northeast, you see the end, and that's a near map image, that's the most current construction. Image that we have that shows point three, four miles between the end of that recently constructed sidewalk. Coming all the way around the cinema site and then down, um, to the intersection, and then beyond that, we have some photos showing what the receiving end of a sidewalk. That we would install would be looking like across McKnight, and so it's not. You know, even if we put the sidewalk in, it still goes nowhere, and that actually may lead people to the false assumption that they can keep going.
I think common sense takes over, certainly.
I mean.
Blazers of town.
Yes, so, so. I certainly appreciate. The point that gets made, you know, on the development end of, well, the sidewalk doesn't really go to anywhere. Appreciate it, because every developer in the four years that I've been here has come and said the same thing, because McCandless has about five sidewalks. So, we ourselves are sometimes connecting sidewalks in public projects that are. Often at much greater cost than the public sector, or excuse me, the private sector, because we have to use, you know, prevailing wage labor and. Public bidding and so on and so forth, um, we've basically built something that a developer would call a sidewalk to nowhere. Because we're trying to make the connection opportunities, you know, at times, so. I mean, I get it, I, I, I totally understand, I've also seen us require a developer to build a sidewalk to nowhere with a ten-foot retaining wall. So, I, I mean, this is a really high priority the council has set over the last couple of years is, yeah. In the past, we waived this requirement often, a lot of communities did in the eighties and nineties, and, and our current council. Really wants to change that properties turnover, so.
How is the payment in lieu calculated?
Yes, it has to work it out.
Yes.
Starbucks doesn't care, right?
So what we've done in the past is we have, we can provide a number and discuss that and make sure we're on the same page. Or we can get a number from a contractor and a sealed, you know, engineer, um. Estimate, and then we would review it and have that conversation. So, you know, ultimately, we need to get on the same page, because we're not going to accept a five-dollar fee for this, whatever, five thousand. Or twelve hundred square feet of sidewalk.
Like, if, if, if we get a contractor that says it's forty-five thousand dollars to build. The sidewalk within the public right of way down Blasier to McKnight.
We can speak to other contractors as well, you know, and get.
Forty-five thousand, and Starbucks says, great, forty-five thousand. But what's the rub? Why doesn't Starbucks just spend the forty-five thousand and build the sidewalk versus giving us the forty-five thousand? Like, what, to me, what's the rub?
To me, it's a question, I guess this for up here is probably directed more to RJ and Kelly. Is whatever that dollar amount is, forty-five thousand, fifty thousand? Is, is there a location where that money would be better spent and have a better benefit than this location? Because if the answer is yes, then I can see the, the, the benefit of taking that money and using it there. As opposed to requiring the sidewalk, if the answer is no, then I think.
Yeah.
We require it.
I mean. We've had, at the administrative level, we've been working on and off for a couple of years on just like a sidewalk and a connectivity assessment in general. Um, just trying to figure out where would a person reasonably want to walk, you know, from any one place. I don't know of a project on deck that would be not on a state road. You know, of, of a significant length, and of course, the permitting costs and the design and engineering and whatnot balloons. As soon as you're talking about not a local road, which most of our other priorities would be, however. It was made very clear to me by the ward member during the development process that this was an important sidewalk to him, so.
But I, I, for me, I think we're missing, and I'm not trying to be difficult with you, I'm really not, but I was in development myself. And here's the thing, you're Starbucks, you are a global company. You represented that you could accomplish something that you can't do now, or you say you can't do. Well, as far as I'm concerned, if, and I'm not, I'm just one person of many, I would say, go back to your client and tell them. I'm sorry, the landlord didn't give you, you give the landlord enough money, he's going to give you that route for that sidewalk, I guarantee you. And I don't think it's right to put the obligation, um, to either. Build it in the future if we can figure it out, or have to make a decision about a sidewalk that wasn't what we. Wasn't what we bargained for, so I think, my personal opinion is that. You guys need to go back to the drawing board, um, and spend some money buying the rights to an easement to build the sidewalk. That you promised to build us or this even preferred model that you've suggested.
And I think, you know, Starbucks.
Yeah, I, I'd like to offer a slight. Change to that, I mean. I would, from a planning perspective, prefer the sidewalk to be in the right of way, so I would suggest, yes, the sidewalk needs to be built. And Starbucks should build it rather than putting it on the town, and it should be built along the right of way of Blasier. To bring the, the pedestrians into a safer spot.
It's the same thing, it's the right of way that's adjacent to, I mean, they, it's the right of way that's adjacent to someone else's land.
Right of way that they can get a permit from the town to build the sidewalk. And then.
Of course, my point is that they should build it, that they should get it approved and they should build it.
But not in that location is all I'm suggesting.
Not the original location. I agree that the safest and better option.
Okay, sorry, I want you to think, but, well, you said to get it, so that was where.
Well, if you needed an easement or something else from that landlord to get anywhere in that area.
Is that correct? That a private party can construct infrastructure on another private part. Pro, another private party's property so long as it's within the township right of way?
It's not on the property, if it's in the right of way, it's on the township's.
It's within the town right of way for the public benefit, but not for. And it, you know, there's private, there's town right of way in my front yard, my next door neighbor can't. Do whatever they want there, the town can, or the utilities can't.
The township can approve somebody doing whatever.
Just like we do any other developer or like children asking.
It's not an easement.
The property is ultimately owned by the same landlord. So if the town and the landlord gives permission to construct within the right of way, that's like a total moot point.
Construction easement to do the, I mean, most likely.
You do not, you don't need it.
Construction.
You, you, you actually can build in the right of way of the town, it's the town's property, it's not, it's not. The right of way is.
Right of way, but the ownership is in the landlord.
The ownership of the land between the right of way line and the cartway is owned by the township.
It's, that's just not true.
Hey, town solicitor, you still on the call?
That's the definition of the right of way.
Wasn't there a discussion during the zoning hearing board about sidewalk?
All right of way is owned by the, the entity that owns.
Yeah, I already gave him a waiver.
I think before it even came, when it went through the zoning hearing board process. Yeah. I think there was discussion. And the, and that was part of why I think, I think, it was, they wanted to. They wanted to actually kick this to a land development application, but also I think the property line terminates at the right.
The property line terminates at the right of way.
Parcel map.
The deed line goes to a different location than the property, but, you know, everyone's front yard has town right of way. Because the town's right of way is incredibly wide, but.
You don't own that.
You do.
No, you don't.
There may be some cases where your deed goes to the center of a roadway, which is probably a legacy, but if there's a right of way line, you don't own the land.
Right, the town can do whatever they want in that right of way.
All right, good news, we have a town attorney on the line. About right of ways sidewalks and who has the right to construct.
Well, I, I mean, it, it, to some extent, everybody is correct, um, in the sense that it depends. Depends on wh- where the actual deeded property line is, there are situations that they do enter into the r- right of way. Um, and so, uh, that, that means, um, based on the, the example of can your neighbor build a sidewalk in the right of way? No, uh, but the town will, could, could permit that, uh, if your deeded property does go into the actual right of way. Um, and, and, and also, uh, you know, to the extent that the right of way is separate from your deeded property, then, you know, that, that, that goes. To what the other individual was saying, again, it's kind of, I've, it's been kind of hard to figure out who's saying what here. But, um, you know, so, so it, it, nobody is completely wrong and nobody's completely right, so it really depends on the situation, so. I, I'm not exactly sure where the lines are here, but, um, you know. I, I, I think, uh, there's some, been some pretty good points raised about, uh, um, resolving this in a way that, uh. Meets the spirit of what was agreed to in the past and, uh, uh, you know, I, nice try, uh, Starbucks, but, uh. I think you guys, I think you all are on the right track about pushing, uh, the issue here.
We, I believe, I mean, it's, it's been over a year now, but the reason we were even talking about the sidewalk. And what we now realize is an end app parcel, you know, that was not.
Right.
An assemblage. an assemblage site, apparently. Um, is because the property does have frontage on McKnight Road. And I think we all agreed at that time that if the option was bringing it through the end cap area to get connectivity to McKnight or requiring like encroachment upon Pine Creek to get connectivity to McKnight. One of those was more preferable.
And we're not, we're not disputing that. And then Starbucks does care. They want to do the right thing. They're committed to building a sidewalk. Um, you know, my goal here is to use the standards and the procedures outlined in your ordinance to request a waiver and to not have preferential treatment one way or another, just because Starbucks is Starbucks, just that they be treated like any other, any other applicant.
Yeah, I think it's pretty fair to say that I, I can't recall a single instance in the last several years where uh, town council granted a waiver on a sidewalk issue.
We, we have, I've got a council member shaking his head in the audience, but, um, the one that is on the table now that seems likely is the sidewalk on Heinhouse Drive through the Schultz Plan, which literally goes to one house at the bottom of a private road that nobody else can access.
That, that may be different, but I mean, I don't think there's any treatment that's detrimental to Starbucks. We haven't asked somebody who sells ten coffees a week versus you get ten coffees every half second. So.
Right. Yeah. I mean, but they do care about the expenditure. It's not, you know, they don't want to, we're not going to submit an OPC that says it costs five dollars, but you know.
I'll tell you, if I, if I continue to buy strawberry acai refreshers at the same pace that my youngest is asking for, I'm pretty sure I've donated forty five thousand dollars. Before the end of the decade.
I will have as well.
I think we've beaten this source.
To town councils to whether or not the modification request to waive.
Yeah, I just want to have a clarity on the motion that was written in the agenda.
Yes.
Is that motion to adjust the sidewalk from where it was previously approved in the right of way? Or is that also including this fee in lieu?
The, the waiver which would include a fee in lieu was as it was presented to me. Um, the whole discussion about are we altering the configuration and then requesting a fee in lieu on that configuration? But that's like a level of detail that we didn't get into. My understanding was waive it and fee in lieu was.
So if we, if we voted, if we have this motion and reject it, we're back to that configuration being what's approved.
Yes. However, we can present an alternative.
Okay. I, I just want a clarity on what we're doing.
Either way, we need to present an alternative. The question is whether we're going to build that alternative or pay the fee in lieu in the amount that that modified location will cost.
And I will offer a resolution that the current location approved on the plan for a sidewalk be modified to a sidewalk to be constructed in the Blazer Drive right of way by Starbucks.
Okay. So with the actual motion that is on the agenda, it's an up down for a waiver. However, I can carry forward in the materials provided to town council that the recommendation of the planning commission is instead blank. You know, whatever it is that we settled on here.
You want to vote on the waiver first?
Well, we can only vote on the waiver.
Allow us to pay a fee in lieu or not allow us to pay.
So, so to keep it moving along, I, I'm going to move that we reject the waiver, uh, as, as stated in the agenda.
Move a second.
Yep, shall we?
All in favor of rejecting?
Feel like we don't need a roll call that time. All right. So.
But to move it along.
The recommendation of the planning commission is to not approve a waiver. The waiver would include a fee in lieu, whatever the, the configuration is. The options for the developer at this point are continue with the request as stated to town council. They take their own after the planning commissioner makes the recommendation. Or if you feel like town council is likely to follow the recommendations of the planning commission, you may present an alternative configuration to town council. So seeing straight to that step if we were. But you can also proceed with the request as already discussed stage. So you do not have to tell me now. Um, I can have this on the agenda for town councils January twenty second meeting. We would just need whatever you choose to present basically by January twelfth, January fifteenth. That would give us enough time to figure out what to put on the agenda.
Twelfth, you said? Well, we will review. I mean, we'll, we will get back to you. Thank you.
You saw six.
Thought we would save this down.
The last one, Anne, is making real easy.
We actually still have some agenda. All right. We need to approve the, uh, minutes of the last meeting. Uh, are there any changes, edits, uh, anything that anybody wants to add to the meeting, to the minutes? The move to approve. We have a second, second from Sean. All in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting?
Well, we have no audience members, so. Sir, could you please state your name and address?
I want to thank you all for letting me be your liaison for the last, uh, almost a year. I appreciate it very much. It's a very thorough board. Uh, you heard me in the back. I apologize for speaking, but there's a lot to digest. And I want to introduce our new council liaison and planning commission, uh, Mr. Gus Arlo. So he will be with you, uh, for the next two years and, uh, treat him well. Um.
As well as we treated you.
I told you, sit in the back and keep quiet.
I know what they're doing. Very enlightening. Uh, but thanks for all your, your work. On my background, I'm a chemical engineer by education, so I can understand some of this planning. I work for a water treatment company and um, I'm new to town council. It's the first time I've been in an elected position and looking forward to serving. McCandless lifelong resident of McCandless. Um, love this town and look forward to working with them.
Thank you, Jason. Sorry to see you leave us. Uh, we need a motion to adjourn. We have something now, second. From, uh, Brendan and all in favor of adjourning? We are adjourned.
All right. Thank you very much.